The April 7th Board of Education meeting is called to order and I welcome everyone present. I also ask for your patience with my voice as it has been in and out for the last week. But Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready within the greater community. This is a business meeting of the Board of Education and we are pleased that you have taken the time to join us. All board members are present tonight. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Tonight, our color guard is from Southeast High School and please stand for the presentation of the colors followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am a
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, march! Up, bow, face! Forward, march! Okay, thank you Southeast Color Guard. Latona, first item?
Student Board update.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you Superintendent Bealfield, President Albert, and members of the Board for allowing us to share with you tonight. My name is Cole Richardson and I am proud to have served as the first-ever Wichita Public Schools' Student Board President for the 2024-2025 school year. Over the past year, your student board has been hard at work reshaping our leadership model to better serve all 44,000 students across Wichita Public Schools. One of our proudest achievements was hosting the Wichita Public Schools' annual Winter Leadership Conference, a powerful gathering of student leaders from both middle school and high schools. This event created space for meaningful collaboration and showed our younger peers just how powerful their voices can be. This shift was necessary. Supersac, as you know, had run its course and it wasn't delivering the results the students deserve. I'm incredibly proud to have led the effort to build something new, something stronger. While we're not claiming perfection, I can confidently say we've laid a foundation for a board that's ready to lead and make a difference and a lasting impact. But we're not done yet. With your continued support, we're ready to keep pushing forward together. While we're proud of our growth, we need the Board of Education's help in two key areas: exposure and early leadership development. First, awareness. Many students in middle and high school don't know this board exists or how to get involved. We're asking for the board's support in promoting our work through district-wide events, social media posts, district-wide emails, and even short promotional videos. Every student should know they have a platform here. Second, pipeline development. While we encourage all types of students to be involved in the student board, this is not a first-time club. The students that represent their schools on the board are ones that are already dedicated to making change and are passionate about Wichita Public Schools. Most of our members are juniors and seniors, but leadership shouldn't start late, so we want to create freshman and sophomore opportunities to mold them into leaders that can efficiently serve on the student board once they are upperclassmen. With your help to spread the word about our initiative, we can get underclassmen involved now, preparing them to build a stronger, more representative board for years to come.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Landon Haushauschau. I'm a junior at Northeast Magnet. And first thing I want to do is thank you. Thank you, everybody, to this room, but especially thank you guys. Me, Cohen and Alexis, who sadly can't be here tonight, have had many opportunities to go and connect with the community this year and it's been an honor. Our goal is to lift students up. That's our main goal. That's consistently what we're here to do. We love to embrace humility. And what we've learned this year is that humility is not about thinking less about, thinking less of yourself, it's about thinking less about yourself. And we've used that consistently through this year. But I know this year was a foundation, so what does next year look like? And we have a couple of changes coming. Next year, we're, excuse me, we're using, we had four boards this year, we're cutting it down to three boards. We're going to use those students' minds and put them all together so that everybody can have a collaborating voice. We're going to have three main important boards that will actually settle the next meeting. And in that next meeting, if you know, we talked about this earlier this year, we have seven committee chairs. And so naturally, since one board is leaving, that opens up a committee chair. And so we determined this year that we need a social media manager. And that social media manager will broadcast everything we're doing on the student board, every way we're helping students and every way we're lifting students' voices. And like I said earlier, the next meeting, we're discussing those boards, but we're also discussing new positions. And so every single student has to run for a position if they obviously want a leadership position. It's not like a term limit that you just get to do it another year. And these students, this is a nonpartisan election, we're not voting red or blue, they're simply voting about what leader is best for the position. And so we have nine students running for around seven committee chairs, so we're really excited to hear their voices and hear what they have, their goals for next year. Finally, for next year, obviously, we're senior-heavy. And so we have a lot of seniors with a lot, with a lot of wisdom, but they do have to graduate. And so we determined that in order to keep building this board, we're sending each, it usually should be around two students, back to their schools to recruit two more students. Those students will be a junior and senior. And so those, that one junior can build for the next year and the senior can also learn and give their wisdom on the board for the next year. We're incredibly excited for next year. And as Cohen mentioned, we have, we represent around 44,000 students. And what I love to say is that every one of those students has a name and every one of those students has a story. And one of those stories I'd like to share with you tonight is Trace Tompkins. Trace Tompkins is a special education student at my school and he didn't really have community the last couple of years. He's in my grade as a junior like me, so for two years, he really didn't have anybody to cling to. But we actually got him hooked up with his Class of the Year, his class competition, and he's now an important member in his class, class activities. But one of my favorite things about Trace is Trace loves the student board. And he's not on it and he won't be on it next year sadly, but after every single meeting on Wednesdays, Trace comes up and asks me about the student board. And he also will tell me his ideas. Sometimes those ideas are a little bit radical, but we try to get them done as best as I can. But I love seeing the smile on his face when I tell him that, hey, I did tell the student board we probably should have pajamas every single day at school, but they said no. That smile on his face really means a lot to me. And that's exactly what the student board brings. It brings value to each student. It makes each student feel at home. It makes each student's voice be heard. And that's exactly what we're here to do for this year, like we've already done and what we're here to do for next year. I'll let Cohen close it out.
Like we've kind of said before, I just want to thank all of you guys for the opportunity to change. Like we said before, Supersac, while it was great while we had it, this, this change was necessary and we're grateful for all of you guys creating this change for us so we can create a change for our district. And to kind of wrap things up, we're happy to answer any questions, so let's help keep building a stronger future for all 44,000 of us students. Thank you.
Melody? Do you have any questions?
As soon as I pull it down, yes. You all are pretty phenomenal. I'm sure you already know that, but so, first of all, you're, it's not a theme, but your, what are you calling it again? Your goal is what I wrote, is lift students up, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly what we're here to do.
And how are you doing that?
We're making students' voices feel heard. I love saying that if, if, most people, all they want to be is seen and heard. And so that's our goal. Is so, we're really a diverse student board. We have people from every single school, obviously, but also different cultural aspects of life. So whether it's somebody coming from a poverty area in West High School or some, a high school basketball store at Heights, we're here to represent every single person.
So you've almost answered my second question, and that is, you said that you represent approximately 34,000 students. Is that what?
Forty-four.
Forty-four, so you represent everyone?
We try to.
Is that what you're saying? Okay, that's why, hearing, so that's why I was going to say, well, how, how, how are we, where are the other 10,000-plus students? But you've, you've obviously answered it. I, I think that's, those are the two questions that I had. I just wanted to give you a big kudos. I met Alexis and she's just as excited as you all are. I mean, she presents extremely well also. What is her, is she a junior or a senior?
She's a senior at South High School.
She is a senior?
Yeah.
And you're trying to recruit younger, or under, younger classmen and persons to come in, right?
Yes, ma'am. Well, we're, next year, each student should go back to their school and recruit a senior with obviously a lot of wisdom, but also a junior that they can build up.
And I think that Board Member Nak Vong had something to do with lifting the voices of students, knowing that it is so, so important. So I just wanted to simply say that it is indeed, and I'm looking forward to really good things. Thank you.
Thank you. Nak?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm beyond proud of you guys. I'm beyond grateful for you guys. First, I would love to shadow you, Cohen, or you, Landon, or any of the other student board members, just to learn more about, hey, what does your day-to-day look like? Because I think there is something that needs to be said about the importance of our district elevating youth voices, youth perspectives, youth leadership, and especially as you guys are building this foundation for student board. You're working on changes to your student body, changes for your student body, you're working on changes for your school. I want you to think, long-term, at a district level, what policies would you recommend changing for us to be more student-centered, for us to improve outcomes? And how can we make that happen? How can we work together? So, long story short, I'm beyond, I'm excited. You guys have done amazing work and I look forward to seeing how else we can help this, elevate this even further.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nak. Kathy?
I can echo what the other two board members said, but I want to say, where were you when I was in high school? You know, one of the things that people in general want is just to be accepted. And you have now made a path for that to happen. And I so appreciate the ones that might feel excluded or just dismissed or rejected. You are making a difference and I am so proud that you have stepped forward and you've stepped up to this. I want you to groom everyone recruited just like you. So, because if they're like you, I mean, the entire, the entire school district can have a change and be lifted up. And we adults actually learn from you, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for being here. Keep up the excellent work and continue to invite the board members to your meetings because we, we've enjoyed the ones that we've attended, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a great night, guys.
Latona, next item?
Wichita Public Schools' Distinguished Classroom Teacher of the Year Awards.
Welcome, Tammy.
Good evening, President Albert, Superintendent Bealfield, members of the Board. Tonight is a great night because tonight we get to honor and recognize 16 outstanding educators. And I'm going to invite the finalists to come on forward right now. Every year, we have our Distinguished Classroom Teacher Awards and this year, we had over 250 educators that were nominated individually for these awards. And tonight, you're going to meet the top 16. So coming forward are our finalists here and they're going to come step in front. All right, so when I call their names, they're just going to wave. And the new teacher category, we have Deborah Montgomery, third-grade teacher at Kinsler Elementary. In the new teacher secondary category, we have Michaela Taylor, math teacher at Brooks Middle School. In the primary category, we have Heather Breslin, kindergarten teacher at Riverside Leadership Magnet, who needed to go her kids' head activities, so she was here earlier. In the intermediate category, Gianna Grant, third-grade teacher at Isley Traditional Magnet. In the middle school teacher category, we have Mary Ann Olson, math teacher at Pleasant Valley Middle School. In the high school teacher category, Samantha Soria, Spanish teacher at Southeast High School. And in the support teacher category, elementary, Braden May, psychologist at Isley Traditional Magnet. In support secondary category, we have Laura Almquist Parks, behavior interventionist at Coleman Environmental Magnet Middle School. And so, big congratulations to all of our finalists. And I'll invite down our winners now, if you can come and stand at the front. So these are our eight winners for each of their categories from this year. So the Distinguished Classroom Teacher Award winner in the new teacher category is Bill Nestor Brown, fourth-grade teacher at Black Traditional Magnet.
All right, now we are ready to concentrate and use our brains.
Bill strives to create an environment where students feel supported, encouraged, and inspired to reach their full potential. He loves seeing the lightbulb moments when a student grasps a new concept or overcomes a challenge.
I am confident.
I am confident.
I am brave.
I am brave.
He was the first in his family to earn a college degree and initially went into the corporate world before beginning his educational journey. He was inspired by his grandfather, who only had an eighth-grade education, but was self-taught and a successful business owner. His grandfather instilled a love of learning and the determination to never stop pursuing knowledge.
Good job.
He wants his students to leave the classroom with confidence, a love for learning, and the belief that they can achieve anything they set their mind to.
You're smart. You know things, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
In the new teacher secondary category, we have Laura Ariza, business teacher at North High School.
Can someone share, why do they think people struggle to save money even though they know, know it's important?
Laura's path to becoming a teacher took a few turns. She pursued a career in business and worked at a bank. But after taking a job at North as a secretary, her passion for education ignited and she went back to school to get her teaching degree. She uses that experience as an example to her students to never stop learning and pursuing their dreams.
You have $500 in your savings account and as your group, you're going to decide how you spend or save that.
She believes that learning should be fun and engaging for students. She likes to incorporate games and projects in her classroom to encourage her students to think creatively.
It tells minus 100.
She says the rewards of teaching come from seeing students grow in confidence, take ownership of their learning, and apply their knowledge in meaningful ways.
You get $200. Woo-hoo, you needed that.
In the primary elementary category, we have Kristen Harris, first-grade teacher at Ortiz Elementary.
Touch your brain and think. Ways to show people you care about them.
The main reason Kristen became a teacher is her own experience in school. She was kept back in third grade after being identified as having a learning disability. She says the support she received from her elementary teachers, who recognized her challenges and provided her with tools to embrace her unique learning style, allowed her to thrive. This experience fueled her desire to work with others who may be facing similar struggles.
I love this word. Fork!
Kristen uses a lot of kid-centered activities in her classroom to keep students engaged. She incorporates puppets and music into her lessons, and her students love her insect collection.
Empathy. What is our rule?
She wants every student to feel valued and supported so she can watch them flourish.
Who runs the world, everybody?
In the intermediate elementary category, we have Michelle Page, fourth-grade teacher at Lawrence Elementary School.
If it's a product, and here's a big hint, you were finding products yesterday, what type of equation are we going to have?
Michelle's mother encouraged her to volunteer at an elementary school while she was in college. After she saw how the teachers helped students grow both academically and emotionally, Michelle knew that she had found her calling.
Two, because it's times two.
Michelle celebrates that all students bring their own unique abilities and experiences to the classroom. She creates lessons around what's unique about her students, which not only makes the lessons meaningful, but also allows her students to take ownership in their learning.
Give me a thumbs up if you're with me so far. This should be a review from third grade, right?
Michelle says working as a teacher brings rewards that you don't always see right away, and it's an investment in the future. Seeing her students gain confidence in their abilities over time makes it all worth it.
In the middle school teacher category, we have Jennifer Kirk. She's a band director at Krista McCullough Academy.
The quarter notes at 53 clarinets, those need to be brought out. Can you circle those?
Jennifer has always had a passion for music. Growing up, the bandroom was where she was free to express herself and work with others to create something beautiful. She strives to do that now with her students, letting them know that every one of them plays an important part.
Trombones, I was going to make you freeze there, but that posture looked very good.
Her music classes go beyond band and orchestra. Students come to school early to practice in the school's drum line, and her jazz band tours elementary schools and retirement communities.
Ah, there it is. Can you play measure 1551? Ba, 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 1551. Here we go, one, two, here's measure 50, rest.
Her students know that they can have fun in her class, but also know that she has high expectations and they need to be prepared to work. Her students want to be part of that environment.
That's it. The gong is great.
In the high school teacher category, we have Erin Matlock, English teacher at South High School.
When you agree or disagree, make sure you tell me why. Give me evidence. Give me reasoning. Why is it that you feel that way? Everybody got me?
Erin always wanted to be a teacher, often playing school when she was little. Her parents were advocates for public education and instilled in her the belief that education is a gateway to opportunity.
All right, tell me why, especially if you haven't spoken yet.
Besides teaching language arts, Erin also runs the teaching pathway. She says helping the next generation of teachers find their passion for education is a fantastic reward.
Have you taken psychology? Yeah, I was like, that's definitely a psychology answer. I love it.
Erin loves working with teenagers. Even though they can sometimes act tough, she knows that what they really want is someone to care about them. She says if they develop confidence to accomplish their goals, then she has accomplished her goal.
Everybody good? Okay.
In the support teacher category, elementary, we have Tish Habbert, comprehensive support coach at Adams Buckner Enterprise, Lowitcher, Mueller, and White Elementary.
Before we get started, talk to me about how ELA is going right now.
Tish believes in the power of learning for both students and educators. Her goal as a curriculum coach is to help teachers recognize and build upon their strengths. She knows teachers are better able to support student success when they feel confident and supported.
And Ariana, I have been so impressed with the way your kids are partner reading.
Tish had a difficult home life as a child, so school gave her that sense of safety and belonging. She credits her kindergarten teacher with instilling a love of learning and inspiring her to become a teacher.
What is the purpose of that suffix? What is it doing?
Tish strives to build meaningful relationships with others. She says helping a student grow, overcome challenges, and realize their potential is the greatest reward in teaching.
Yes, nice work.
In the support teacher category, for secondary, we have Brooke Johnson, instructional coach at Wichita High School East.
Where do you see yourself and what skills from Avid might help you?
Brooke works to build relationships that empower both her students and her colleagues. She says building relationships doesn't always have to be formal, but can be in everyday moments like hallway conversations or notes of encouragement.
Essentially, you're modeling for them the things you just talked about. Modeling with students.
She says she didn't fully know she wanted to be a teacher until one day while she was student teaching. The teacher was gone and the sub put her in charge. She was very nervous to have all that responsibility, but knew she had to step up to the challenge, and she was glad she did.
I am really curious to hear how the nested class goes the next couple of years. It'll be good.
At the core of her teaching philosophy are curiosity, risk-taking, and community. She believes that fostering these qualities in both students and teachers creates an environment where learning thrives.
All right, we have just a couple extra announcements before you guys sit down, but before that, if you are here as a family member, a principal, a cheerleader of one of these incredible educators or one of our finalists, can I get you to stand up? Because, yes. Can we give them a round of applause, too? So, as Distinguished Classroom Teacher Award winners, we do have a couple extra nominations that we get to make. So two of our teachers will be our nominees for the Kansas Horizon Award, which is an award from KSDE for first-year teachers. And our nominees this year will be Bill Nestor Brown and Laura Ariza. We'd also like to name those who will represent Wichita Public Schools as nominees for the prestigious Kansas Teacher of the Ward. And our nominees for this year will be Kristen Harris and Jennifer Kirk. What you don't know is I just gave all four of you more homework. So let's give it up for these guys here. This truly is a great way for us just to celebrate eight and 16 of our incredible educators that are impacting our students every day. So thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for the hard work that you do and the dedication that you serve for students and the families that we serve here in the district. So thank you very much. Kate Latona, next item?
United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, President Albert, Vice President Melody Cray Miller, members of the Board, and Superintendent Bealfield. Congratulations again to all of the DCTA nominees and award winners. I think they deserve another round of applause from all of us here. We're represented by an incredible group of dedicated educators that serve students across our community. And it's with that, I'm pleased to talk tonight about community schools. I was privileged to have the opportunity to attend a community school visit last week, hosted by the Albuquerque Public Schools and AFT National, along with Deputy Superintendent Gil Alvarez, Board Members Miller and Nak Vong, and elementary and secondary educators from United Teachers of Wichita. I'd like to share a few reflections with you about the experience and offer some insight into how community schools might offer a powerful community support model for our students and our families. To do this, we'll first look at the original vision of community schools that many of us have talked about before. Community schools are teacher-centered, whole-focused, and before the Albuquerque visit, it was our belief that a plan for community schools should emphasize teachers in building leadership, providing wraparound services for students and families, creating one-stop hubs for family engagement in our schools. Confirmation from Albuquerque tells us that our ideas are validated in putting educators in the schools and the And putting educators in the schools in the center of the community and integrating health, social services, after-school programs remains a proven formula for sustainable impact for outcomes through a school district. I think that we also can take away from our visit that a gradual implementation will lead to long-term success for programs like this. Before we visited, we recognized the importance of pacing and ensuring stakeholder buy-in in conversations about community schools. And that was affirmed with Albuquerque's "go slow to go fast" approach, which includes building trust and clarifying roles, including principal and community school coordinator, and reinforcing the values through preparation and incremental rollout that best serves our community. Some key details from Albuquerque that should inform Wichita's decision-making. One, the importance of guardrails and safeguards for any system that we build. Albuquerque is developing and employing clear guardrails around funding, accountability, and scope to prevent their model from drifting off course. And it's important that we take the opportunity from the start to begin on that pathway. The Wichita opportunity is to review our existing school policies and contracts to formalize these safeguards, especially around community school accountability structures and budget transparency. Secondly, collaborative governance and partnerships. A joint powers agreement in Albuquerque empowers county commissioners, city agents, and the public schools to work together to share resources and credit. This creates opportunity in Wichita to proactively invite our county commissioners, city council members, local legislators, and business leaders to co-create a local version of this partnership framework that ensures the responsibilities and resources from our community are shared from the outset. Third, teacher buy-in, trust, and transparency. In community schools, frequent staff briefings, open financials, regular updates provide the trust needed for long-term cultural shifts that we would be talking about. The Wichita opportunity is to establish a predictable schedule for communication and building level staff, ensuring teacher buy-in and voices heard from the beginning and can help steer the program's direction through a pilot. And finally, defining what community schools mean to our community. Albuquerque leaders stressed that a clear definition of what a community school is, tying it to research-backed methods in the local context, was important. The Wichita opportunity is for you as a board to set a succinct set of non-negotiables, integrated support services, teacher-driven leadership teams, culturally responsive programming, so that we align on what community school means within the USD 259 strategic plan and framework. So, three, I offer you some actionable takeaways as board following up from this visit as we start conversations. One, it's to reaffirm our timeline and phased rollout. If we're gonna talk about community schools, Albuquerque's example confirms that success hinges on deliberate pacing. And I emphasize to you as a board that timelines which take time and phase the pilot out and gradually expands it is aligned with best practices. Secondly, we pursue new partnerships with the county and the city. I think this is the place that I'm most excited, because it gives Wichita an opportunity to take the silos off of resources in the manner in which other elected leaders from other government bodies have talked about for so long. We have the opportunity to align and replicate the multi-agency collaboration that we've seen in other areas in Wichita and in Albuquerque. And I think it's important that we start talking from, in creating formal dialogue with our commissioners, city officials, and other potential partners. Secondly, we have the opportunity to establish clear guardrails for our conversations together. I would propose that we create a community schools framework to adopt district-wide outlining definition, roles, accountability measures. And this is probably a necessity for consistency and safeguarding the integrity of the program across schools that would be a part of the pilot. Next, maintaining a teacher-centered model. We saw that a formal teacher advisory group and teacher buy-in at each pilot site to ensure educator voices are the driving decisions about curriculum alignment, family engagement strategies, and professional development needs is crucial for the success of these programs. And finally, regularly reporting progress to the stakeholders and to the community. We have to commit to scheduled updates, to the board, to staff, to community, on milestones, achievements, funding progress, performance metrics, whether it be attendance, academic outcomes, social-emotional indicators, or legislative needs. In conclusion, by combining lessons from Albuquerque and with our established vision and the conversations that we've had, I think that through teacher leadership, deliberate pacing, robust partnerships, and transparent guardrails, we can create a thriving community schools network and initiative in Wichita. On an important aside, as we discuss collaborative partnerships across the community. Over the weekend, a news article aired on KWCH stating that schools across the country are being asked to sign in return a certificate to the United States Department of Education, affirming the end of diversity, equity, and inclusion DEI practices as a condition for receiving federal funding. I want to be very clear, this framing is misleading and dangerous for our community. Diversity, equity, and inclusion practices do not discriminate against any group in favor of another. In fact, they are grounded in the principles of fairness, access, and belonging for all students, regardless of their race, background, ability, language, or economic status. Federal funding is not a privilege. It exists to help level the playing field. It exists because states fail to protect the rights of so many students. Under Title I and Special Education Idea laws, these funds are designed to ensure equity, not to eliminate it. To suggest otherwise distorts the very purpose of these programs and undermines the work that educators do every day to serve students with a wide range of needs in Wichita schools. When students feel seen, valued, and safe, they learn more. They engage more deeply, and they grow into the competent members of our community we want them to be. Belonging is not a political idea. It's a human one. And we must continue to build schools where every child has the opportunity to belong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Latona, next item?
Service Employees International Union.
See no representative? Next item?
Public Communications. We have Mr. Dave Fish.
Okay, for Public Communications, I want to thank you for joining us tonight. And if you have signed up for public comment, you will have three minutes to speak. And we kindly ask that you acknowledge your allotted time according to the timer displayed on the screen. We encourage you to share your thoughts openly and honestly, but we ask that your remarks remain focused on school-related manners and are respectful and constructive. The board will listen to your input, but will not respond during this meeting. However, we are listening carefully and may follow up as appropriate. So, welcome, Mr. and Mrs. Fish.
Thank you. Can we start when I start?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Board Superintendent and team. I'm Dave Fish. This is my wife, Marty. We want to recap and urge you to reverse an OK closure decision before summer. The board voted, the board vote and coupled facility master plan failed. The board has the responsibility and authority to represent. The scope of the bond plan vote was not right. Kudos to Kathy Bond for realizing that. The no vote means that more than revisiting the plan, it needs revised and reversed. OK should remain open for good, and the poll results do confirm that. Reversing the OK closure should be important. It deserves the same urgencies that you've shown over the last year to regain trust in the people who want, that, who you want to, who want to help you. The plan missed the most important issues. It's not been about buildings at all. It's been about helping our kids improve performance and keeping up school maintenance. The minutes show the Ohio guys and their 85% success rate, and the builders all miss the mark, and a well-meaning public. So, why am I here? This is, this is important. OK's mission for the last 150 years has been to teach. And you decided to close it in months. Neighbors have acted quickly, and now you need to act quickly because you're responsible. I know the plans to close OK based on beginning being a 1948 building aren't fact-based. I also know how good OK is. I know how great it's been. And I know how great it can be. We can help. You need to help us help you. Urgency. The board can move with urgency. We saw you, your March 24 vote closed schools in two months with a bold, swift stroke. You proposed rebuilding seven new schools and closing four in the facilities master plan, including OK. Our team opposes OK's closing and asks you to remove OK from all closure plans before the summer break. Mission and your opportunities. Keep OK open for good. Closures affect all. This is our mission. They're your opportunities. OK Elementary doesn't fit the 60-year-old narrative. OK is structurally sound, has a capacity for 450 kids. That's an opportunity. OK has a history of excellence, stable neighborhood, support, and leadership. Opportunity. OK has taught from its locale of choice for 150 years next year.
Thank you, Mr. Fish.
Thank you. Close it or celebrate it. You're gonna close it or celebrate it. Take OK closure off the table. Keep OK open for good. Show some urgency. Make a statement before the school.
Thank you, Mr. Fish.
In May.
We appreciate your time this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I urge you to seize this moment of opportunity. We provided some extra information.
And the board members have that information. We thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Fish. Latona, next speaker?
Jessica Carr.
Welcome, Jessica.
Greetings, Superintendent Beilefeld, Members of the Board. My name is Jessica Carr. I'm a resident of Wichita. I'm speaking today regarding removal of USD 259 messaging regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. I have a PhD in education, specifically in the area of developmental psychology. And I wish to emphasize that language, images, and all forms of representation are key to a child's understanding of their place in the world. All of us also know that historically, equity and equality have not been granted to all members of our community. Thus, the removal of such messaging and programs is a serious misstep. I urge you to stand up for what we all know is true and honorable. I read now sections of a February 2025 statement from the New York State Education Department. Although we live in Kansas, the facts of this statement remain true. And one of the facts stems from a Kansas court case, Brown v. Board of Education. In 1954, the Supreme Court held that separate schools for African-American children were inherently unequal. Since then, Congress has protected and prioritized historically neglected students through legislation such as the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. These laws recognize and celebrate personal, social, and economic differences. They are models of strength through diversity. The statement continues, "Recent executive orders issued by the President are antithetical to this tradition. We denounce the intolerant rhetoric of these orders. Our children cannot thrive in an environment of chaos. They need steady and stable leadership that we will endeavor to provide." End of statement. I now encourage the Board of USD 259 to take a similar stance. The facts are the same. Public education is a social asset for the public good. Reinstituting DEI messaging and programs is a matter of principle, both for free speech and for the importance of these initiatives that you enshrined in policy and program in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. And I'll just remind everyone that Wichita Public Schools' tagline is "Every Student Future-Ready", and "Every Student" does not have an asterisk after it. So, we mean every student. And so, we will continue to provide, to meet the academic needs of every student that we serve within our district. So, Latona, next item?
Strategic Plan Goal II: Middle School Progress Monitoring Report.
Alright, I'm gonna welcome Tim Hamlin and Brandon Johnson to the table to share with us an update on one of our interim goals about the five-year plan that we are working on putting in place for our, all of our, all of our middle school students as they head into high school. So, take it away, gentlemen.
He's making me, that's like a European car. I'm driving from the right side.
Good evening, President Albert, Vice President McCray Miller, Superintendent Beilefeld, Members of the Board. My name is Brandon Johnson, Executive Director of Secondary Schools.
Tim Hamlin, Executive Director of College Career Readiness.
And we're here to talk to you about Goal II, Middle School Interim Goal. Our update is around the strategic plan, student success outcome number two. We did it. Look at us. Okay, so our goal is to prepare students for life, college, and career. That's the outcome that we want to happen. The next slide will give us that. The actual percentage we want of students is 50% by 2029. So, we know that we need to put in the work now with our middle school kids to have their five-year plan of their interest, of what they want to pursue from now all the way through the class of 2029. We can have 50% of them reach their, with five or more post-secondary assets. Our goal for this year is that 100% of our current 8th graders will complete their five-year plan by the end of May of 2025. And in this presentation, we'll give you an update on where we are with that goal.
Okay, so, we probably should take a moment to explain or review what we are meaning when we say "five-year plan". So, in this situation, as the name implies, we have every 8th grader, they will work to list all of their courses that they will take each year in high school. So, that's four of the years. And then, the fifth year is simply their plan for that first year out of high school. So, that is the five-year plan. How we managed to achieve this is, it was a very large undertaking. If you think about all the students in Wichita Public Schools, we had to have a plan. I would like to publicly thank a couple people here, Laura Barker, Lee Casper. They were instrumental in developing the training and the timeline that our staff out in the buildings had to follow to help us achieve this goal. So, how it would work, students would work with their teachers, either their core or their advocacy teachers. Let's take English, for example. An 8th grader at some point during this school year would meet with their English teacher. They would look at and map out and select which would be the appropriate English class for them each year of high school. Same would be repeated for math, science, social studies. In advocacy, the students would learn about the elective options at the high school level, including career and technical ed. I had to make sure there was a plug in there for that one, so. Once again, it is our goal here to prepare the students for life, college, and career. What you see on the screen is a timeline. You also have a handout that I believe Latona passed out that's in far more detail. But what our slide here represents basically is a progression starting at the beginning of the school year, when we would have the middle school counselors, teachers trained. And then, we'd come all the way to our present, where our students are with that five-year plan. Like I said, lots of people have helped in this, and I want to thank all of those teachers out there in the, in the schools. It looks like the, it's a two-sided document. There it is, yeah.
We didn't have it.
You didn't have it.
Coming around now. Now you have access to it.
There we go. So, as I said, that has far more detail than what you see on the slide being projected presently. On the back, there are some of the links to the resources that were developed to train our teachers and the middle school counselors. So, again, that, that is a wonderful document. So, we're gonna go ahead and look at what the result has been. 100%. We met the goal. Now, when you throw 100% up there, I understand that is an easy target for people to try to shoot holes in. So, I do want to tell you that at this day, as I said here, if a student had enrolled at one of our middle schools after this process, it's entirely possible that they do not have their five-year plan completed yet. But, at one point, every single student in our school district had the five-year plan completed in ZELLO. ZELLO is the career exploration program that our students use in Wichita Public Schools. And inside there, there is simply this tool. Students go in there, as I indicated earlier. They select courses that they would like to take in high school. And when that matched or reached 23 credits, that constituted a completion. And there we were for 100%, so. In the process, we wanted to share some of the positive feedback. I have some negative as well, but some of the positive comments that our middle school teachers shared. Basically, they enjoyed the process, having that opportunity to visit with a student about their future. It also allowed the opportunity for our high schools and middle schools to collaborate in terms of the pre-enrollment process. We did experience a few challenges. As I indicated, the 100%, anytime a student had completed their plan, all it would take is if the high school decided not to offer a program that that student had placed on theirs, then that student's five-year plan would revert back and have a gap in it. So, it was kind of a moving... So, it was kind of a moving target throughout the whole process. But, other things that we learned is the collaboration on the timeline. I think we're going to move that up a little bit, more so into the first semester. This year, we had it after the winter break, where the middle schools and the high schools actually started to design the pre-enrollment process.
Okay, next we're going to talk about strategies for continued progress, because we know that this is just year one. Our kids are going to begin needing this every single year until they graduate from high school. So, the next thing up on our list to keep us moving along is?
We certainly want to maintain the goal of 100%. That saying that if you shoot for the moon and you miss, but you still land among the stars, that 100% is an excellent expectation for us to have.
Strategy Two is to have middle school, high school collaboration moved to first semester, which Tim just talked about. Our high school principals, counselors, they like to get pre-enrollment going as soon as possible so they can get master schedules built as close to spring break as possible. So getting many of those eighth graders pre-enrolled in the right classes early helps them troubleshoot and get close to 90% in their fill rate for their master schedule for the next year.
One thing we would like to try next year to increase the parent engagement in this process is we would like to, through Parent Link, send a message out monthly that would have a, for lack of a better term, a canned question that we would ask parents to ask of their student, hoping that that will generate some conversation or dialogue about that student's five-year plan and their individual plan of study.
And then Strategy Four is to explore the capacity of ZELLO to batch elective courses based on students' individual plan of study. So throughout their sixth, seventh, and eighth grade years, we have them explore using ZELLO to find different careers they're interested in, not interested in, create that individual plan of interest for them, so we can start getting them in the right prerequisites as a freshman and sophomore, so that when they're a junior, they don't just discover CTE classes. They've known about that since middle school. They've known the prerequisites. They get those things out of the way. We're trying to align our system so that kids have as much exposure to the great things we have early and often, because when they find out about their junior year, it might be too late to get them all the things they could have earned for credentials when they go out into the field. So, we know aligning those, making that the stuff that we control on our side will only help us on the backend.
And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Before we get to questions, first off, great job. This is the direction I think we all know we need to head, and we want to continue to head. Brandon said alignment, Tim said alignment. That's a big part, I think, for the Board's perspective, over the next 12 months, depending on how ambitious we can be. We're really trying to align the system so that options are clear for students. That's a big part of what we're trying to do here. Back in my day, you know, it was a piece of paper. Every year, you'd fill out, you know, and you'd pick your classes and you'd send them in. This is really about thinking about your future, thinking about what you want to do after high school, think about what careers you want to have, and getting into the first course so that you can take the second course, you can take the third course. If you don't get in General Service Automotive One until your senior year, you don't have enough time in your schedule and your progression to get all the way through it. So if you can get in as a freshman or sophomore, you can complete the pathway, get the credentials, get the work-based learning, which makes you even more and more successful. So, this is a little bit bigger than just a five-year plan, even though this is a great start here. How we enroll kids, how we market our pathways and our options to parents. You will see more alignment coming through enrollment, out-of-district enrollment, in-district enrollments. A little bit of the theme, not really planned this way, but a little bit of the theme tonight is about great educational options for kids and making sure we have it. We have more opportunities in Wichita Public Schools than any district in the state of Kansas. So we need to make sure people know that and understand how to access it. It's way back accessing the opportunity. I love the idea of including the parents in the conversation, because if you're like some of my kids, you know, they'll sign up for all the lower-level classes. I'm like, hold on, timeout, you know, we're going to take at least one honors class here to challenge yourself and push yourself a little bit. So, parents want their kids to do well. They want their kids to succeed and be ready for college or career and life. And that's a big part of including them in the conversation to help those kids achieve their goals. So, keep up the great work. Great job.
Thank you.
Excellent job, gentlemen. Can you explain how a student would change their information in ZELLO?
As Brandon indicated earlier, obviously, this is an organic process, if you will. What the child thinks in eighth grade could dramatically change by their sophomore year. So, this will continue once they move into advocacy in high school. And so they have that opportunity at any point. They can go into ZELLO. They can make changes to their five-year plan. So, they're not locked in as an eighth grader.
So when they get into high school, it's going to be really in that advocacy class, and we have those classes that they're going to be taking more. We have programmed things their freshman year, sophomore, junior, and senior. They do to explore ZELLO itself. And if things change, okay, hey, let's go in there. You are lined up to take all these fax classes, and you're going to go be a cook, chef. Oh, turns out you don't want to do that anymore. Now you're interested in automotive. Let's go in there. What classes do you need to take now? Change. Let's get those going. Put those in your IPS in ZELLO, and then when you meet with your counselor, we can talk about changing your schedule to get those things done. It's an ongoing process. The other thing about this is it goes on with the kid for two years after high school as well. So they have access to this beyond high school, so they can use this in their post-secondary venture as well to be like, hey, this is what I was interested in. This is what I've done. They can use it as they go on to the next step.
And the other thing I want to throw in on that topic, because it's housed in the cloud, it's accessible all the time for the kid. It's really more than just, I know Tim likes to talk about CTE. That's his big thing. But it's really more than just that, right? Every adult in the kid's life hopefully is a career counselor, every single one. So if the football coach says, hey, you're looking, you want to play D1, let's look at the NCAA clearinghouse and the courses you need to take. Wait a second, you're ZELLO. You need to fix this. You need to take a third science class or fourth. I don't know what all the guidelines are. The math teacher can say, hey, you're really good at geometry. You need an honors algebra two next year. Go in and change it right now, right? We can preload some of the prereq classes in there. We can batch load some of the students that are, when they do the choir screening, all the kids that can make magicals, they put them in there automatically. So it really allows everybody in the kid's life to have, to help them achieve their goals, instead of putting it all on the shoulders of the counselor or the advocacy teacher, both who know the students really well, but they may not know, caselids are big. They may not know the math aptitude or the science aptitude for every single kid that they work with. So, it allows everybody to access it. It can be updated all year round, anytime a kid wants to make a change.
Okay, very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Melody?
Thank you. So I'm going to hone in a little bit on the parent perspective, because I know you were saying that it's possible that we can put something, a link in Parent View. Is that what I heard, or?
Yeah, the plan for next year is using Parent Link.
Parent Link.
Right, to send messages once a month, trying to, again, just generate that conversation around the five-year plan.
Right. And so, how are parents, and would there, the way that they actually engage or interface with this, only in ZELLO?
That's the primary place. And I believe, I may need some help here, but I believe part of the conference format in both the middle schools and high schools is to refer to the ZELLO, the IPS. So there's that opportunity there. Also, parents sit there with your child. They can log in 24/7. They also, there is a possibility, the opportunity for parents to have a login as well, so.
Right. In ZELLO or in what?
In ZELLO.
Okay. So, the point that I'm getting to is not all parents are going to be.
Sure.
I've kind of heard it in your voice. So, what would be our other options to really try to either assist them in being not only aware of ZELLO, but to be able, that it's user-friendly, you know, that they can actually access it? Or how else can they get engaged with helping their student with their scheduling? And ensuring that we not only keep this 100% rate that we have, but as they matriculate on into high school, where they're going to be working on the plan in advocacy, and we'll be checking in on them, that parents will be able to follow along with that.
Is, go ahead.
Well, are you comfortable coming down, Rob? So, this is part of the alignment that I was, we've been talking about. Is a single sign-on for parents. As a parent, with kids in three different schools and six different kids in those schools, I do have my kids' ZELLO login, but it's separate than their student view, and it's separate from the bus, and it's separate from the lunch, and it's separate from everything else. So.
In the consent tonight, there's actually, you'll see online enrollment in there as a part of consent. The first stage of this is enabling single sign-on for a parent. So, a parent will, they'll have a landing spot similar to our staff and students, where they'll have all the services that we offer to a parent that is available via single sign-on. So they won't have to remember very different passwords for Parent View, ZELLO, all the other programs that we offer to a parent. And we'll be able to expand options for parents as well.
And when is that going to happen?
This summer.
This summer. So by the August?
By online enrollment.
When they come back, by online enrollment. I like that concept. I mean, that simplifies things. That makes it very accessible. But once again, that is going to be for parents that actually get on there.
Correct.
I don't know if we have any other methods is what I'm asking, to really engage parents in that process.
Absolutely. It's a great question and a very real situation. As I indicated with the 100%, obviously, we have students in our schools that maybe are non-verbal, that we're not able to actually manipulate and enter that information. So we had adults, either through special services or ESOL, actually sit and work with those students. It would be my hope, in my former life as a building principal, that those adults in those students' lives during the school day maybe can be creative in reaching out to parents, trying to find ways, because obviously, this is not the only way that we had to communicate. So, it's a good point you bring up. I appreciate that.
Yeah. And I'm going to continue to kind of talk about, I'm going to slip community schools into this, because that may be also an opportunity for, from a partnering perspective. There may be groups, not only mentoring, but groups in the community in these different pockets that could be able to be those, not support parents, but plus ones, you know, where they actually can help them outside of the school setting, because it may not always happen in the school setting. So, we'll continue to think about that. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate the update and look forward to continued progress.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, Latona, next item?
Creative Minds Program Update.
All right. So next up is Rob Dixon and Olivia Sumner, who are going to talk to us about Creative Minds, the pilot project that we have put in place this year. They're going to give us an update on feedback and next steps.
Welcome.
Welcome. President Albert, Vice President McCray Miller, Superintendent Beilefeld. This is an update to Creative Minds. Many of you have come and visited it. It's at the Learning Lab. And I'm going to start with a short 48-second video that was displayed when we won our Innovation Award for the Wichita Business Journal. So, Jennifer?
...a modern-day, one-room schoolhouse designed for kindergarten through sixth-grade students. Here, learning is an adventure. Our students explore their passions and demonstrate mastery through creative projects, using tools and materials you won't find in traditional schools. Families are at the heart of our approach, actively shaping a curriculum that inspires curiosity and creativity. From designing inventions to exploring ecosystems or celebrating cultural traditions, every project is a step toward unlocking your child's potential. Creative Minds Vertical School, where education is a shared journey of discovery.
So, we were awarded the Innovation Award through the Wichita Business Journal this year, and it was an amazing experience. We got to bring a couple families to the table with us. I would say, when you talk about family engagement, I don't know of another program that engages the family as much as Olivia does in that program. I would say it's at least on a daily basis, wouldn't you say, Olivia?
Oh, yes. We have parents in every single day. We use our parents as experts. They come in to volunteer. They bring their friends and family in to volunteer. We take all the help we can get. Our parents are integral.
If you don't know, it's a one-room vertical school, a classroom. So we have K through six in one classroom. It has its challenges and different iterations. I would tell you that the very start of this year, the program and how we scheduled is, today is very different than it was in the very beginning. And some of you have come and visited, and what I would tell you is, even today, I was there today, it looked very different than it did even just two months ago. So, Olivia, could you tell us a little bit about what a day looks like, what the projects look like?
Yeah. So, on a typical day, we start with our Good Things and our Community Building. We are piloting Future Ready with, is it Ring Ring?
Yeah.
Ring Ring. So the students are answering questions that help prepare them for life, and then we talk about those. And we dive into math. Each student is working based on mastery, not grade level. So I have a kindergartner working at the end of first grade. I have a fourth grader that's working on some second-grade work before he hops back up, and anything in between. So whatever the student is at, they're not limited either direction. We make sure that they're getting what they need for mastery. And then we have our reading, which is completely, again, based on mastery. So we have the groups like you would see in a classroom as far as interventions and core time. We have our reading, our writing, our grammar. But it looks a lot different, because they're based on how this child is doing versus this one. So I might have a second grader learning with a kindergartner. I might have my sixth grader helping a fourth grader. Whatever that looks like for the day, based on what the students need, is what we're doing. And it is, it's always evolving. It's ever-changing, completely based on students' needs. They take a very large part of their responsibility for their learning. They tell me what they're interested in, right, and I build our curriculum around that.
So I just got to say, today I was there, and we had a student, they were, one of their projects was creating a robot, and it had a projector built inside of it. And so the kids were kind of producing what their showcase was going to look like. So I wanted to kind of talk a little bit about the showcase and invite you all to come see the showcase when it happens.
Yes. So our current PBL umbrella, so our Project-Based Learning umbrella, is innovation and invention. So students decided that they wanted to make something better, and that could have been anything from a gardening tool to a robot that happens to be a companion. So the team he's talking about have built a prototype with a projector inside of it, and they have created a bunch of content that would interact with a child, and it's called the CamBot. It's BestieBot. So your new child's best friend is what they're marketing it as, and they will actually be going to Grover Labs on Thursday to get some marketing advice and see how they can improve their prototypes. That's super exciting.
So how did they get connected with Grover Labs?
They had to research who would possibly be interested. They had to make those connections. They wrote their scripts, and they cold-called companies with us sitting next to them, of course.
This is K6 students.
And that particular team is two fourth graders and a fifth grader that decided on the robot. And we have all sorts of different inventions. The Innovation Showcase is April 17th from 3:00 to 5:00, and we will have all of our different inventions there. It's a public event. We're inviting everyone, all of the community partners that have given some feedback. Johnson's Garden Center has helped a student of ours. We've reached out to so many local. April 17th, so it's Thursday from 3:00 to 5:00. Yes, at Learning Lab. Yes.
Yep, yep. And I would say, we're pretty spoiled at the Learning Lab from a facility standpoint, like to have the STEM space, to have the media space where kids can edit videos and actually create commercials there. It's an amazing space to work out of. And I would say, I think the future of education looks like spaces like that, if you were to think of what our schools look like.
And anytime you walk into the school, it will also look different, because the furniture is always moving and changing based on how the kids are collaborating.
So, we have some student data here. You want to kind of give us a heads up on what this looks like?
So, you're seeing student data from the start of the year, and some I was able to pull from May of last school year to between December, when we did our interim for FastBridge. And two of them are actually showing February's results for their fluency in particular. But there are some fluency, some math, and some comprehension. We are seeing growth across the board. Fluency is obviously an easy one to see that growth in, but it's exciting how we've seen the growth from any of the core curriculum. And I think a big reason for that is our afternoons are so cross-curricular. and the students have that ownership. They decided what they wanted to research. They decided what they wanted to create. And then we are learning through all of that creation. So it's awesome to see their confidence grow, and like, one of our third graders said, he can finally be a kid again. They get to learn their way, and I think that's a pretty awesome way to represent us, but also Learning Lab in general.
Yeah. So where do we go from here? Um, we have, uh, talked with the Learning Lab. They, they love us being a tenant there, and they're going to allow us to expand uh, to two classrooms there. We currently pay about six thousand dollars for the entire year to use that space, so uh, pretty fortunate to be able to, to have access to a space like that, and...
And that includes all the supplies and everything, correct?
Right, right. We don't pay for any supplies or anything, uh, within the lab, so, uh, it's a pretty, pretty great deal. So, and honestly, timing-wise, I had no idea that the Learning Lab was being built whenever Kelly and Michelle and we kind of just dreamed this up. Uh, it just kind of fell into place, so, pretty amazing. So that's what the space looks like. It'll be two classrooms, uh, with a divider in the middle, and so you can have both independent class time uh, or, uh, class together. And next year, we will offer, uh, breakfast and lunch, so.
Our parents are very excited about that.
So, questions?
So, I, I'll ask you a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Just to, um, so two classrooms next year, what, what are some lessons you guys learned? So this was a pilot. We kind of jumped off and had to do a lot of figuring out. So what are some things we learned this year? Breakfast and lunch, maybe?
Breakfast and lunch is huge, yes, yes. Um, it, it was a burden on families to, you know, make their lunches every day, and they come in with donuts a lot, because we have busy families. Speaking as a busy parent.
I would also say it's both, you learn a lot in having a one-room schoolhouse and how to facilitate that, and it's also something else to think about the day and how to deliver core and project-based learning at the same time with uh, also a sixth grader, middle school student with all standards. So we do the power standards for elementary, but you have all standards for a middle school student, and so mixing all that together, uh, presents some complexities that I, I don't know that we were ready for.
Yeah, that was, uh, we knew that standards would be a lot, right, because it's seven grade levels. But once you really start digging in,
Yeah.
um, that sixth grade did throw us for a loop, definitely. Um, we're very fortunate, though, that, again, our parents are so involved. So if there is anything that we're struggling in, the parents are always, they're always there to help. They're just a phone call away, if even. Sometimes they have, they have memberships to Learning Lab, so sometimes they're down the hall. So we do have those extra hands when we need them. Um, I think the vertical classroom, I've worked with multiple grade levels, but again, not seven grade levels at once, and so learning how to, um, combine those kids and, and how they will work best together, they have actually started calling themselves siblings. They say they don't feel like friends, they feel like siblings, because that's what it feels like when you've got that many different ages in one space. And so it does feel like it's navigating a family more than a classroom.
So if you want to add some complexity on top of that, there are four other microschools inside of the Learning Lab, and we also, you know, cooperate with them within that facility, so. Yeah, there's a lot, a lot of variables.
So what would be a, uh, I probably should have prepped you for this question, but I think some of, for some board members or some, some people in the public, you know, why, why would you go to a separate space for this? What would be some of the challenges if we were to have started this in a existing school? Um, how might that have complicated things?
I would say, uh, size of our classrooms, uh, square footage, uh, is not the same. Um, when I even think about how the day is there, it's very much fluid. Like, you'll see kids in the hallway all the time. If you walk down one of our elementary schools, you don't see that. Like, just the, the busyness of traffic in that day is, is very different. I mean, um, Kath, you've been there and, and visited, and Diane, you've seen what that looks like. I think it's, it's a very different space, and it lends itself to a very different culture and, uh, than what I think we're used to as a system.
The independence that the students have as well, because of the stewardship that the building facilitates, um, is tremendous. I mean, my kindergartner will go into the kitchen. She prepares her meal, and she goes and sits down. She cleans up her meal. And while we're there to support her, it's not necessary. Now, at the beginning of the year, there was a lot, there was a lot needed during lunchtime. But at this point in the year, the students are so independent, because they're, they know what's expected, and they have those, that resource available to them. We're in a traditional building. There's just so many different things happening that things have to be so scheduled. It's not an option.
I could see this as a school within a school, though.
Yeah, eventually. So, and, and I'll, I'll quit asking questions, but, um, the, I do think we, we have a, a clear plan for next year. Beyond that, you know, I, I don't know that we want to make any commitments, uh, right away, but, um, I think about a month or two ago, uh, Rob shared with me the feedback, the parent feedback that I passed along to you all, and it was, you know, twelve out of twelve gave it five, five out of five stars, right? Um, parents are very happy with it. They have an incredible teacher. They have an incredible space. There's a lot of advantages to it. Um, but it's also a very student-centered model, right? That's the point, is that the kids are focused on the learning. I'm excited for year two, because the other, the other advantage to this is, um, think of year-over-year growth for a teacher that knows kids as well as they do. Um, I also wanted to lift up that, you know, th- these kids take, take FastBridge, they take state assessments. All the other accountability measures of, of a regular school, or all of our other schools are there in place, too. Same standards, just a different approach to teaching it. Um, I think, you know, one of, one of my visions, uh, for our district that I think we need to continue to, to challenge ourselves in how we think, are, are magnet choice opportunities. Uh, in the past have really been, uh, mostly about the what, of the what of learning. So you might learn about communications, or literacy, or, uh, engineering, um, not necessarily about the how, or how you learn. And so having different magnet options that offer different hows, uh, different schedules, different flexible models, different ways that you can interact, uh, with one another and the curriculum. Um, I, I think there's demand there. I think we can show impact and show effectiveness, and, uh, there's obviously increasing choice across the educational landscape, and we, I, I don't say this, uh, to brag, but we, we are the best choice. We, we can offer something better than really any other institution could offer. Um, but we need to keep innovating, like a lot of those institutions are innovating to keep up, so.
Yeah, there's not one family that wants to leave Creative Minds.
Right, exactly.
Yes, in fact, the sixth grader is very sad that he has to leave.
Yeah.
So all fifteen students that can continue will be with us next year.
That's awesome. So, all right, I'll, I'll quit. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, uh, Nock?
Yeah, thank you for the, uh, presentation. Could you go back to the student data real quick? Uh, what's on the, uh, top left?
Uh, that is fluency. That is, yeah, that's a student's fluency data that got cropped.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Then what are the, uh, the black boxes?
Uh, that's where we hid the student's name. We have such a small student group there. I didn't want to identify any students.
Okay. Would it be possible to send us like an, like an aggregate, like of all the students?
Sure.
For, like, you know, the, the FastBridge, um, all that, and I'm assuming like state assessment scores haven't come out?
No, we're actively taking them. We finished math this week, yes.
Yeah.
And, and so how many students are in, are in this, uh, program right now?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Um, and then do you happen to have like a breakdown in terms of like, like, here's how many kids are in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade?
Yes, like, do you want me to give that to you now? Or do you want me to just send it to you?
Yeah, just, yeah, maybe, maybe just, um, send it to me. And then you guys mentioned you're expanding to, uh, uh, two classes, so would you still be the only educator, or would, would there be like another teacher on board?
There would, we would, uh, we currently have a open position for another teacher, so.
Yeah, 'cause I was maybe like, that's gonna be a lot of work, so.
Thank you.
All right, no, that's all. Thank you.
Stan?
Thank you. Um, one of the roles of a Board of Education member is to, uh, plant seeds. Um, and we're like a big, uh, ocean liner. Uh, we don't take sharp turns in the middle of the ocean. Um, but one of the issues that has come to my mind that I, and Kelly can confirm, and I talk to him about this all the time, and that is, I think the future of American education is really gonna ride upon how well we are doing in the area of creating, uh, critical thinkers. Uh, you only have to look outside of what's going on, and you can see that we are lacking that ability right now because we're just, we have so much as citizens thrown at us in all different direction. A lot of it is deliberately misinformation. And so I was hoping maybe, and I think we're gonna have to incorporate critical thinking abilities in everything, every level, every subject. Uh, I, I'm not just talking about social studies. I'm talking about all, you must be able to critically think about something and make up your own mind about it, other than to just follow in line with everybody else. So I guess with, with that introduction, what I'd like to know is, what examples are you doing in the area of critical thinking? Uh, can you give a specific example of how you're trying to develop that?
So I think all of our project-based learning units, um, focus very heavily on problem-solving and critical thinking. This current one we're in with inventions and innovation, they have to research what already exists, and they have to confirm that that's a valid source. We do a lot of digital citizenship in the classroom for that exact reason. And then they have to build their prototype, get feedback, and make it better, right? So how can it be better? What, what could possibly make this better now? And so really, critically having to process through all of that. If we go back to our, um, Community and Culture Unit, where we worked on the, um, cardboard carnival, and were earning that money to hopefully have that tiny home built for Wichita by the end of the school year. Um, that was all them thinking critically how they could solve a problem in our community, and they chose to focus on the homeless. And so then they had to decide how could they earn that money, right? So, she's gonna have us dancing.
That, that's a, that's very good. We'll, we'll just enjoy the music for the second.
Yes, yes. No.
You know, I would also say that, you know, our students are so exposed to devices that they also have anxiety issues in developing conversations with people outside of their circle of influence, and I think the projects that we're doing right now, having a kid create a script and cold-calling are the right types of activities and functions that a kid can use to operate, just in life in general.
Can I kind of, um, narrow in on, you said identifying sources?
Yes.
And what little research I've done, and the seeds I've been trying to pass on, is that seems to be critical. Just because Stan Reeser says something does not mean you have to take it as one-hundred percent true. That's just a so- the source is Stan Reeser, but that doesn't mean he's correct in that. So how do you do that without getting a agenda that can be, uh, attacked as, well, you're just, you're trying to exclude, uh, sources, which is w- not what critical thinking is about at all. Matter of fact, you want to read some misinformation
Sure.
so that you can understand the information.
Right.
So, uh, I, I appreciate you mentioning identifying the sources, because I think that's the skill that we have lost, uh, recently, and so I, I hope that, uh, we can, uh, spread this critical thinking, uh, to all levels and all courses.
Oh, yeah, that's an issue that goes far beyond Creative Minds, right? Like, that's something that every elementary, middle, and high school, and college, and beyond, is currently facing. Um, we can just Google the answer, and well, Google said so. AI assistants said so.
Right.
Wikipedia said so, whatever it might be. And no, that's not good enough. What is this website? What is after the dot, right? Is it org? Is it com? Is it net? What does that mean? Um, you said this is the author. Okay, well, let's look that person up. And like Rob said, when we are contacting these community partners, we have to figure out who those people are first. So, okay, Grover Labs. Well, who did you speak to? Let's look this person up. Why are they an expert? How can they help you? So really just diving deep into what we're finding online, because, yeah, that first AI answer can't be our answer, ever.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Kathy?
Olivia, thank you for your participation in making this first year such a success, and, and Rob, you too. Mr. Beilefeld, can you refresh my memory? When we first initiated this, um, we had invited students to attend that may have not, are falling through the cracks. Is that correct? Can you refresh my memory on how we got the sixteen students?
Yeah, so.
Pass that off to Rob.
Yeah.
So we originally, uh, did a query of any student having an exit code from the district, either homeschool or another district. And so we queried those folks, uh, initially to, to get kind of where we are today.
That's right.
Um, I would say, in the future, I mean, obviously, it, we're an open district and kids can pl-.
That's kind of like where I was going with my next question, now that we're expanding with the second classroom. Are we gonna query again, or is it a first-come, first-served? Is it gonna be sixteen more students?
So I think we'll end up, uh, in a lottery, but it will be by grade level, so that we don't... Um, one of the things I, I'm trying to think about is having two teachers will likely break that up K-three and four-six in that space. And so I don't want to overload one side of that grade level, you know, of, of that banding to make it easier. So we'll likely do, uh, an interest with a lottery by grade level.
And do we ever see this going maybe to eighth grade? I mean, if we're going easily K through eight, I mean, is this not another opportunity where we might be able to look through K through eight?
Yeah, and, and I think that's part of why, um, you know, Mr. Harris talked a lot about trying a pilot, starting it slow, getting it off, you know, we want the foundation laid to see is, is K-six right, K-five right, K-eight right, whatever it is. Um, as they get to middle school, complexity increases, standards increase, right? There's, there's challenges with that, but that doesn't mean it's a non-starter, so.
Well, I was quite impressed when I visited, and I'm gonna make sure to try to come on April seventeenth. I'd just celebrate with you. Um, I, I think it's, even it's been mentioned here at this board, many of us learn different ways, and it's more prevalent now in twenty-twenty-five that not everybody can sit in a desk all day and stare at a blackboard and maintain attention. So I think this is a very good stepping stone, so I'm real excited about this.
Thank you, Kathy. Melody?
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of basic questions. So if we're planning for growth, and we already are going to actually add another classroom, that would be an additional fifteen or sixteen students, um, have you extrapolated out and/or projected growth over, let's say, I don't know, five, ten years?
So, um, our current, uh, queue right now is reaching close to a hundred students.
On the waiting list?
On the waiting list, yeah.
Okay, but...
Yeah, so I, I think it, it depends on how fast you wanted to grow. I think this would be compounded. I think if we go two, you could go double that for, you could just double every year. I think that would be a choice of the board and, and Kelly at that point, obviously.
And I, I, we've had some of these conversations, but I, I directed Rob in this presentation to just talk about next year.
Okay.
Just because, you know, we don't, when we say things publicly, that sometimes they become a
I understand.
more, more a promise than we intend them to be. So we know what next year looks like. Um, if we continue to, to see growth like that, parent, uh, meeting parent expectations the way we have, I don't know why we wouldn't accelerate it, but we don't want to make any promises to, um, with what it might look like in the future, so.
Right, and we look at, when, when you're gonna look at the per pupil price, price, cost, how would you say this compares to a traditional elementary or K-through-eight?
So those kids are counted as a traditional student today?
So are we saying that it is about the same
Yeah.
cost?
Yep.
Maybe even less?
Possibly even less. No, no, we, we do take all students, so we have students with special needs. We have students with gifted IEPs. We have students with, um, you know, from, from all, you know, just like we would in a regular school.
Sure.
Um, so that, that's been some of what we've had to navigate, is what does, um, IEP support look like if you, you can't just walk next door to get services, um, speech services, whatever those might be. Um, again, more of what we need to continue to, to make sure we're, we're ready for before we scale in a large way, but yeah, I, I think the, you know, cost per pupil, if that's what you're asking, is probably lower than average, but close to whatever the average is.
I would also say like, it's a discovery process, because, uh, some of these students are coming. 'cause some of these students are coming from the microschools that are around, so they've never been tested. So there's a process for that.
Sure. So that was one of my, my final question was students with IEPs. So how do they receive their additional support?
So we partner with Franklin right now. And Franklin and EIA both help us with IEP assistance currently.
But I mean, their supports in the classroom setting?
So like, send, they send staff over back and forth from Franklin Elementary?
They do actually send staff over.
We have a gifted facilitator that floats to the parochial schools that also comes to us for gifted. We have, our SPED support is Christie at EIA. And she meets virtually with the students who need that support to make sure we're meeting those minutes. And if we have, if we have a student who needs hearing services or speech services, they come to us for that.
Okay.
And those are a couple of other, you know, there's an advantage to being at the learning lab for some reasons. There's also would-be advantages to being in a school. You think of serving lunch and breakfast, you know, things like access to service providers when it comes to IEPs. So it's a given to take. All these things have, have...
We'll be delivering a large refrigerator to the learning lab this summer to deliver breakfast and lunch, so.
Good. Now, and I'll plan to be at the 417 event.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, seeing no more questions. Thank you guys very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
I think this is an exciting opportunity for students and families within the district. And Olivia, thank you for your continued support and dedication through this process.
Thank you for your support.
Okay, Latona, next item?
Non-resident enrollment and admission overview and seat capacity recommendations.
All right. I'll invite Michelle Drumright and John Weiss up to the podium for non-resident enrollment and admissions overview and seat capacity recommendations. You win the longest title of an agenda item tonight. Good work.
And the most interesting.
Yes, I agree.
Good evening, President Albert, Vice President McCray Miller, Superintendent Beilefeld, and members of the board. So tonight, to lead off our presentation, Dr. Michelle Drumright is gonna start us off with a overview of the Department of Choice Enrollment Programs. Then we're going to go into the state statute and the board policy that govern how to make seats available for non-resident students. And we're actually gonna walk you through what our recommendations are gonna be for this year. Oh, we aren't even on the right. Thank you. All right.
Okay. So we just wanted to take a moment to talk about the Department of Choice Enrollment and Programs. So knowing that with open enrollment now in effect in Kansas, that providing a clear, welcoming, and accessible experience for our families is more important than ever. So this Department of Choice Enrollment Programs is designed to streamline and strengthen and as we've been speaking about, align the processes across all of our schools and just across the district. So mainly, I wanna highlight what we're focusing on. So first of all, simplifying open enrollment and special assignment processes for schools and for families. Showcasing school options across the district. As you all know, we have a lot of great opportunities for families and just building a platform to better showcase and share those opportunities with all. Ensuring consistent and transparent processes between schools and across the district. So we're saying the same message, no matter what school or department that a parent is talking with. And then, really importantly, delivering exceptional customer service. So customer service to our schools and to our families and to the community.
So as I'm sure you know, a couple of years ago, KSA 72-31-23 came into effect that lined out how school districts are supposed to provide seats to non-resident students. This essentially, you know, broke down the process, but also, not a good driver. But it also identifies a couple of deadlines. May 1st to get our board's approval, but then also June 1st actually published, so that the public can see what vacancies are available at which of our buildings. Policy 5506 was also brought into effect shortly after that, that the board approved in November of 2023. And then also again, earlier this year, whenever the timeframe for applications was actually extended. Then this policy actually breaks down additional timelines, the processes that will follow. And then also breaks down, you know, where our priorities fall in terms of the non-resident students who have applied. Then what qualifies as good standing? When a student applies, gets accepted, further years, they don't have to continue to apply, but they have to stay in good standing. And then also, any differences in the process for those students who wanna apply for magnet programs? And I'm way ahead of myself, I'm sorry. This chart here actually is a high-level overview of what vacancies we have throughout the district. At the elementary schools and middle schools, we have to break it down by grade level. Then at the high schools, we break it down by school. In your packet, and this is just an example, in your packet, you actually have the proposed recommended seat vacancies per school and per level. You'll see that we have it broken down by each grade, except for, of course, at the high school level. And then we've got our total capacity, the projected number of students that we have coming in, and then also the total open seats for that school. The way these numbers were determined, see, we have a high amount of mobility throughout the district. And there are a lot of special transfer requests. We have push-ins from newcomer and any students that are categorical with IEPs that require them to be pushed in for certain, certain subjects. And we wanna, most importantly, provide the same opportunities for our students as what we're actually providing for non-district students. So at the secondary level, there was a 25-75 split, 75% of those being, those vacancies being kept for internal students for all of that movement. Then also, at the elementary level, it was a 50-50 split.
Okay, so if you just look at the timeline, it's April 7th. So today, we're presenting the recommendations to you with the goal that by May 1st, that the recommendations have been approved by the Board of Education. And then by June 1st, we'll have these numbers published on the website for the community. The application is currently open right now. It opened January 1st, and it's open until June 30th. So we are accepting applications for all non-resident, out-of-district students. And then by July 15th, we will run a lottery, if that is necessary. So it depends on how many people apply to each school based on the capacity that we are presenting to you tonight. So if a school has five available seats and they have four people apply, those four people will automatically get in. If they have 10 people apply, that means we'll have to run a lottery to get, just so we can just place the five students. So that will be done by July 15th. Okay, so John talked about all of these things a little bit, but out-of-district students already enrolled in the district. So students we accepted last year or previously do not have to reapply. So we will keep them in the district through graduation. We want to make sure there's an understanding that the magnet application process and timeline does not align with this. So any one from out-of-district that is applying to any of our magnet schools still has to go through the magnet application process. So those, that timeline is different. Actually, the magnet application timeline has already closed for this year. So if an out-of-district family wants to attend a magnet school, it's a different application. They have to go through the magnet application for that. And then out-of-district enrollment can be revoked at the end of the school year if a student is not in good standing. So each spring, we will do an audit or a review of all of the students that are enrolled in the district as out-of-district to ensure that they are staying within good standing as outlined in the board policy. Nope, sorry. So we would like to recommend that you approve the seat capacity that we have presented to you this evening that is in accordance with the Kansas law, KSA 72-31-23.
Okay, very good. We have a few questions here for you guys. Thank you for your presentation. Stan?
This is the second year we've done the out-of-district capacity seating. It's a little more formalized this year. Last year was almost like a trial run, if it's my understanding. But did we ever, and I apologize if this has already been reported, did we ever hear what the final numbers were on number of out-of-student, out-of-district students that WPS received last year?
Yes, we did. I think the final count was under 100 students. I can't tell you exactly, because some of them changed, but it was under 100.
I'm actually surprised it was, was it fairly close to 100?
I think by the end, it was like 60, yeah, 65-ish. By the time we went through and realized, some of the people that had applied for out-of-district were actually in-district, so, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was a common misconception I always got every time this subject comes up, was it's not an open enrollment within the district, it's an open enrollment from out-of-district. So if you said it was in the 60s, did we have a number of how many students we, did we lose that they chose to go to another school district?
That is a question that we are looking into. So we, I've asked that question also as I've stepped into this role with this department.
Okay, I think that's something the board will wanna hear in the future on what our net gain or net loss was. I'm encouraged to hear it was that many. I really expected it to be even lower than that.
Yeah, it's been really interesting, sorry, but like, looking at what school districts also, you know, we've been able to sort the data by what school districts the majority of our kids are applying to come from.
Exactly. And get a percentage of what kinda, where the movement actually was. I'm assuming a lot of our requests at the high school level is going to be because of our career pathways. And we don't have all our career pathways at every single high school. So if you are, if you have a child, I'm just trying to think as a parent here. If you have a child that's extremely interested in firefighting science, and there's 14 seats available at South High, you've got a, I'd say you have a fairly decent chance that you could maybe succeed in getting over here. Let's, but these ones that only have one seat available, I'm looking like at Southeast, if you're really interested in that pathway that's only offered at Southeast, and there's only one spot, is there any way to, you almost hate to turn away somebody that has a great interest in that pathway, but we only have one seat available? Is this hard and fast?
Yes and no. So the difference between the in-district and the out-of-district, I think that for right now, in my learning about this, we have, we're not talking about in-district, but most of the students that would be wanting to transfer to a high school because of the CTE pathways are currently in-district. One of our goals with this department is to better communicate all of the opportunities available at our high schools to draw people in. So at that point, we're working with the programs individually, like how many can a program handle versus the capacity of the school?
I was gonna say, 'cause if we want to draw people in, but our capacity is showing almost nothing, then we're, we may be sending the wrong message there, or a mixed message maybe. But I'm encouraged that it was that many, and I'd like to see it, I'd like to see that continue to grow. I just am a little concerned that, you know, if our capacities are so low, are we gonna be able to, you know, take advantage of this, this program?
No, those are great points.
And Michelle, if I could?
Yes.
So correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause there's a good chance I am.
I won't correct you. You're gonna be right, yeah.
These are based on capacity with current teaching staff, right? We could add 100 to one of these schools if we wanted to add more teachers to create that capacity. So, so those are decisions we make along the way, that if we, if we were to get a huge interest in some of these buildings, that we possibly, now it's harder at high school, because it's departmentalized at the elementary. It's easy, I mean, if we had 20 kids and wanted to go to building X and we had available classroom space, we could add a teacher to accommodate those kids. So this is, this is with current staffing. What we project, and this is a lot of kids. I can tell you, in my former district, where we had four sections or three sections for one grade level and that was it, this was pretty easy and straightforward. This is complicated. John mentioned mobility, special ed placement, newcomer classes. You mentioned CTE pathways. I do think part of it, at the high school level, part of what we're reflecting though is a response to feedback we've got about some of these high schools being, being full. Southeast, you know, at capacity, East at capacity, Heights at capacity, right? Like, and are they, are they at capacity that we couldn't squeeze one more kid in there? No. But, you know, we can't, we can't squeeze 50 more kids in there without adding more, more staff. Does that make sense?
Yes, and that's how I, and that's how, when you answered yes and no, that's how I took it. So not to end the conversation, we can still have a lot of conversation and questions, but I would like to get a motion on the table. Diane, that I moved that the Board of Education approved the seat capacity presented this evening in accordance with Kansas law, KSA 72-31-23.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Stan, seconded by Kathy. We do have more questions on the table, so, Melody?
So looking at the capacity, depending on the building, depending on the grade level, we have quite a bit. And do we market any of the buildings? Do we market the programming?
Yes. Yes, we do, but we can do a lot better. So that's, one of the goals of this department is to work with our strategic communications team under our new leadership, which we're excited for some new ideas to develop for that. So yes, we can do a lot better than we have in the past.
So do you have any insight as to how, what that might look like? I understand that you've got a committee that's gonna work on it. Do you have any?
I think the first thing is the website and how we communicate that. We've had lots of conversations with families and even families that, that work in the district, that have children that attend, that didn't even know about opportunities that we have, so.
Absolutely.
For me, it's about, in my department, not me personally, but it's getting in and working with all of the other departments. So CTE as an example of digging in and getting a better plan to communicate all of the special programs we have in the CTE pathway.
And I would, I would jump in and say, you're right on. I mean, like I said, we didn't plan this theme for tonight, but the five-year plan is a piece of that. And what Rob talked about with the single sign-on for parents is a piece of that, right? Like, these, these all tie together. It really, Michelle's done amazing work organizing and systematizing, but it'll need to be bigger than her office to market this in a way that's meaningful and appropriate. We'll get Ernestine Crable on a billboard with, you know, like she always dreamed.
Hey, she did Facebook request me. Hey, she did Facebook request me, so.
There you go, there you go. But, but to be serious, like I said, we have exceptional opportunities and we have more than anybody else around. So we need to share those opportunities. And it's, we, sometimes our heads go to high school and we talk about all the programming at high school, but really it starts in pre-K. It starts in free, three-year-old, four-year-old pre-K, all-day pre-K, like things that other places don't offer that we offer. So from, all the way from there up to the concurrent credit opportunities at high school. So it'll be, it'll be ongoing work, but it's a, it's a, it'll take a team and it'll take focus and dedication to get it refined. But like I said, over the next 12 months, I hope you see, you know, this alignment and us seeing a clear communications picture to community and to parents about what our options are.
Can I add what Kelly said about the single sign-on? So we are working with Rob also where families, this will be a part of the single sign-on instead of the separate application process too. So we are working in conjunction.
In the past, we've had, if you haven't been a parent, you know, if you wanted to apply for IB, you filled out a Google form. If you wanted to fill out Biomed at North, it was a Microsoft Teams form. If it was Avid, if it was whatever. And so as a parent, the savvy parents that understand and know, they know who to talk to, they were able to navigate the system. But to get genuine equitable opportunities for every kid, what Michelle's team is doing will really align it and allow kids to have the full menu, just like when you walk into, you know, you know, Cheesecake Factory. Well, Cheesecake Factory has too big a menu. We don't want to give them anything. Something simpler like Applebee's or something, right? But you see the menu and you know what your choices are instead of having to know, I go this way for this and this way for this. So we can, we can hopefully offer better opportunities, communicate it better by aligning all of this.
Very good. I think the less usernames and passwords we can have in life, the better. So seeing no more questions from the board, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. So I think we're ready to go for a vote. Okay, motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much for your presentation tonight and your information.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Latona, next item?
Consent.
So for the public's information, the purpose of the consent agenda is to help the board handle routine matters efficiently so that the board can spend more time reviewing, monitoring, and discussing the educational issues of the Wichita Public Schools. Students' academic success is the top priority for the Board of Education. Board members review these items in detail during the gender review workshops held at 10:30 a.m. on the Fridays prior to each regular board meeting at the AMAC Building. These workshops are open to the public, but no action is taken. They're, they are for discussion and questions only, and your presence is always welcome. And I'll just remind board members that we can have questions without pulling an item and then still can, still vote on consent items as a whole. So with that being said, are there any items up for discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Actually, I would like to discuss, and I don't have it in front of me, but it's going to be regarding the, our First Student contract.
The Student Transportation Services contract?
Yes.
Okay, so that is gonna be D2. And Addie, are you taking the helm on that?
Absolutely.
I've already told her, so.
Yep.
I think, Melody and I discussed a little bit today. I think just an overall, why is the increase what it is?
Sure. So just to talk a little bit about the process, I think that's important. And we'll talk about a couple of caveats of how we got to this 27 and 1/2 first-year increase, right? We have had a very thorough process. We started this almost a year ago, I think. We asked our friends, our other urban district friends, what some of their daily rates were for their busing services. When we got initial contract proposals from First Student, we said, let's take this to RFP and make sure that what we're bringing to you this evening is a market value product, that we got the best pricing and the best agreement before you. In addition to that, the last four years of our previous First Student addendum contract, we were paying about 2.5% as a CPI increase. We've been getting much more than that in base date aid increases year over year. And the board has been offering our employees higher wage packages in return. And so when we look at the services that First Student is providing, they also almost met the same level of wages that we were meeting with our own employees, but we were only giving them 2 and 1/2% to do it. And so these are people that are serving our kids and providing a critical service to the community. And so that 27 and 1/2% is what's required to maintain those levels of salary that are commensurate with what the board has done over the past for salaries. And it will, you know, prep this contract for success over the next five years as well.
Thank you. Melody?
If I'm, if my music isn't going on my mic, right? So thank you very much for that clarification and explanation. So would you say then that what we are actually doing is paying for the increase in wages that the bus company has already employed? We're basically, we're basically supplement, or I don't even know.
It's a solid combination, right? We've got to look ahead to their upcoming wage packages that they've already negotiated with their, their union. You know, I think of these people so closely as kind of a direct link to our employees too. And so part of it, you think about this contract, part of it is wages, part of it is equipment. Equipment is the other piece that over the last five years, we've seen increase heavily in prices. So a 25 to 30% increase, looking back five years ago to what the cost of a bus would be today, that makes sense based on what we've seen in our, in our own agenda items that we provide to you on board meetings.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Addie. Are there any other discussion items? Okay, seeing none. I move that we accept consent agenda as it is published.
Second.
Motion made by Diane, seconded by Melody. Okay, motion passes 7-0. Latona, next item?
Discussion Policy 5511, Special Assignment of Students.
Okay. I'm trying to get down there too. Okay, are there any questions or items to discuss on this?
Just basic. We updated the other policy that had to do with out of district students. This is aligning our current policy with in district students, so. That's about all there is to it.
Okay. No action will be done on this item tonight, but we will bring it back next month for a vote. Okay, Latona, next item?
2025, 2026, and 26 to 27, Board of Education Meeting Calendar.
Are there any questions or comments on the Board of Education Meeting Calendar? This is a two-year calendar to continue to try to align with, we're putting out two-year school calendar and just trying to keep things the same across the board. Are there any items or questions? Okay. Seeing none, we will bring this back to the next board meeting for a vote. And Latona, next item?
Superintendent's Report.
Kelly?
All right, thank you. Two items I wanted to touch on. First off, it's always, it's always a good night. This time of year in the school season is always fun to do a lot of celebrating and it's cool to celebrate our teachers there. I am a little competitive. And so I think it's worth stating, every, every school district has, gets two Horizon nominees, an elementary and a secondary, and gets two Kansas Teacher of the Year nominees, elementary and secondary, regardless of size. So when you see the top eight teachers out of 4,000, that means something pretty special. That means that there's a lot of, a lot of high quality. Olivia that was here earlier, she was a former DC TA winner. So I think that's worth noting. We have phenomenal teachers and many, many, many deserving ones of recognition. And so these are the cream of the crop and the very, very top. So good luck to, to our nominees. And we've had, we've had finalists the last two years in Kansas Teacher of the Year and Horizon winner from Truesdale this last year. So lots to celebrate there. I did want to make mention of something, one of the public speakers Jessica had mentioned. And just making sure the board's up to date and the public's up to date on some of the, the current goings-on as far as the DEI along with the Department of Ed, things that are, that are happening. It is ever-changing, I should say. Since January, there's been lots of changes in all directions. So what we're trying to do is look at the long game. We're doing the right things for students. We're doing the same thing that we've always done for students and making sure we don't get too out over our skis when it comes to getting ahead of ourselves. But recently, there was, there was mentioned a requirement of states to make a statement about following the law when it comes to DEI and executive orders and all that kind of stuff. And so I think it's important that we are following the law. Just, I know it sounds crazy to have to feel like we have to say that, but we, we are confident and we're following the law and what we do and what's being expected of us. States are reacting different to, to this, you know, mandate. So we'll see the, we've learned from KST today that there was an extension given to, towards the end of April for decisions to be made about this from the, from the state level. So we don't know what's gonna be asked of us, if any. These types of assurances, that's what they call them, are any, any federal money we get, when it's Title 1234, whatever it is, it comes with a number of assurances that say we're not discriminating and following the law and gonna use the money correctly and all that kind of stuff. So it's not out of, out of the norm for these assurances to be asked of states or local institutions. But it seems maybe a little redundant that we're being asked to verify that we're following the law that we've always been following. So anyway, more to come on that. Again, it might change tomorrow. There might be other updates. But we, we, we continue to, I guess the overall message, I think, that's important is that we show up every day for kids, helping kids, helping every student to feel like they belong. And we're gonna continue to do that regardless, regardless of what else goes on and not get hopefully ahead of ourselves when it comes to reacting to some of these things that are, that are out there. So we don't want to have to do, you know, like we had to with a snow day not that long ago, you know, change course in the middle of it. We're, we headed one way and then we had to, had to head a different direction. We want to hopefully keep everything stable, just keep a level head and just move forward as best we can methodically, but continue to just do what's best for kids. So anyway, more to come on that and I'll continue to keep you guys updated as more things happen. But I wanted to just bring that to your attention. That's my report, that's what I have.
Very good, well, thank you. Melody?
And it's really not even a response, it's really about the district. So the things that you've said right now, and I know that there is more to come, to me, that builds in, what I'd like to be able to do with our, from the district to the public and to, and the public includes our schools and all staff, is that we're about consistency as a district. And some of the machinations and changes, and which you've already spoken to, it changes, it's very, seems to be very fluid, changes regularly. But our district is providing that consistency for particularly our students, which I know for a fact some of them are not going to see the consistency across the board from, at home. But at least they'll continue to receive and see that consistency from their district. And that would, you know, filter down to the classroom setting. So I just wanted to kind of build that in, that I am, I'm proud to know that USD 259 is going to, is remaining what we've always been. We're not changing. Thank you.
Latona, next item?
New business and Board of Education requests.
So I think as far as, it's not really new business, but just to let the public know, kind of in a continuous improvement model and through listening to a lot of the public in general, the board has requested more financial oversight from the district. And so we, we have asked the superintendent to create a financial oversight committee. And these, they're currently accepting applications until Friday, April 11th. For people that are interested in applying, I just want to read off the committee responsibilities. And you can go to our website at usd259.org/finance and then find the financial oversight committee from there. And so the finance committee responsibilities will be to review financial and budgetary challenges facing the district, to evaluate short-term and long-term funding strategies for school facilities, to make recommendations on funding allocations, including fees, mill levies, and et cetera, and to ensure transparency and accountability in district financial reporting. And we have heard from the public that they want to seek more transparency and more accountability, and this is an action step towards that end. And so for anybody, especially if you have finance background, if you would like to apply for this, please go to our website and fill out the application. They are due on Friday this week.
Kathy?
Can I get some clarification? They don't have to have financial education to apply, correct?
They don't.
They don't have to, but it's, it's.
We are, we are accepting applications for who should apply. Finance, accounting, or budgeting, facilities, planning, or construction, K through 12 education or higher education, community leadership, advocacy, or public engagement, business, nonprofit, or civic engagement experience, WPS students, parents, and school administrators. These meetings also, if, if you'd like to be on the committee and you're not selected for the committee, these meetings will be open to the public as well. And so people are welcome to participate at different levels for the financial oversight committee.
Okay. Seeing other comments. Latona, next item?
Executive Session, student.
I move that the board go into executive session to discuss matters relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a person as a student, except that any such person shall have the right to a public hearing if requested by that person, to protect the privacy rights of a student who is identifiable for 15 minutes. The executive session will include all board members present and General Counsel Dan Lawrence, Superintendent Kelly Beilefeld, and Board Clerk Latona Hoyt. The open meeting will resume here in this boardroom at, let's just say, 8:25. Latona?
Second.
Motion made by Diane, seconded by Stan. Motion carries 7-0. We're in executive session until 8:25. The board is back from executive session. No motion was taken during executive session, but I move that the board uphold the findings of the hearing officer. Motion made by Diane, seconded by Melody. Motion carries 7-0. Latona, next item?
Adjournment.
I move re-adjourn.
Motion made by Stan, seconded by Kathy. Motion made by Stan, seconded by Kathy. Motion carries 7-0, meeting is adjourned.